Good. Hello and welcome, everybody. This is the Tuesday, June twenty seven, meeting of the planning board. For the village of Psych Harbor. It's five oh one. Let's start with a flag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. There's Barbara. Hi there, up on remote. Everyone else is here in person. The only person we're missing right now is Nat. And Carrie is sitting in for Doris today. Maybe it's called order. Have people seen the minutes from last month?
Yep.
That were circulated. If you're happy with it, we'll take a motion to accept them.
So moved.
Great. And a second?
Second.
Ron, thank you. All those in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Good. This is always the time where I mention if people are in the online or in the room and they want to have to make a comment to the planning board, they're welcome to do so. And I don't know if there's anyone, Carrie, online now who is wishing to speak on any topic. Okay, thank you. Then we'll move on. So we have number four correspondence requiring action. We have one hundred Glover Street LLC, Glover Street. It was it was here before us, six months ago, they're seeking to request a second six-month extension. I think Matt Ivans is.
Yep.
Lovely.
Good afternoon, Board. You want to go ahead, John, or?
Please do. Hi, Matt.
Hey, how are you? Yeah, so we were here six months ago to request the six-month extension. Based on getting through the Health Department. We are literally about a couple of weeks away from gaining Health Department, but it's just not enough time. So I'm here today to just ask for another six-month extension. We probably won't need the six months. But just to be safe. Otherwise, the project is identical to what was approved by you guys a year ago.
Okay. Any comments about this? Any concerns?
No.
Seems pretty straightforward. All right. Is there a process to do this, Liz? Okay.
So moved.
Okay, case moved.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ron. All those in favor of approving this extension?
Aye.
Unanimous.
We want to say it's following January twenty twenty four, just because of the Christmas conflict, or?
I'm sorry, say again.
Did you want to do the until January twenty twenty four, just in case, or?
Yeah, why not? Because Matt, you were, I don't know if you heard this, but this is a holiday, you know, the holidays are in December, so let's make it for the January. Meeting then. Because you have a little more time.
Yeah, hopefully I won't need it, but I appreciate your time and we'll get you that information probably within next month, I would imagine, anyway.
I'm sure you'd be happy to have it move forward, too.
Yep. All right. Thank you, Board. Have a good day.
Thank you. Bye bye.
Bye.
All right. Number five, new business public hearing. So this is a public hearing. A pre-submission public hearing, which is a relatively new thing for us. And one hundred thirty-two Main Street is here to be one of the early, early, early adopters of this new format. So come up to the podium and. Oh, you're right, we do.
So moved.
Okay, moves.
Second.
Seconded by Larry. All those in favor of opening the public hearing?
Aye.
Very good. Full house on that. So the public hearing is open.
Hi, good evening, Board. My name is Katie Frank from Creeds in PC, representing the owner of one three that joined here tonight at Architect. As we were already aware, we went upon the zoning board and appeals for eight variances for an expansion of the existing home burnishing. Business at one thirty-two Main Street, and it was about to the zoning board for a number of reasons, one of which parking and also for secret review. We were then given a memorandum with several questions in which we addressed all the questions in the letter. I understand that it was given to you today, so you probably haven't had a chance to look through all of that. But the application essentially is to expand the existing structure. Right now, it's a hundred percent retail. And so we're proposing to extend it back, adding additional retail space and also a separate office space. So the total GFA for the retail is a little under three thousand. The GFA for the office is around eight fifty. You cannot access the office space from the retail and is completely separate. Regarding the parking, I know that's a big concern. The village is over on the car, there's not enough parking for accesses as they are today. But on site, you can only have two parking spaces that are accessible and functional, because the lot is so narrow. So you could try to speed to park the cars in, but you wouldn't be able to pull them out of your parts behind it. So we are proposing to rotate the two parking spaces in the back. It just, there's two parking spaces existing and we are proposing to keep them. There are other additional questions raised in the memorandum, which we have addressed, ranging from the need for a special exemption, which we don't think we need, because it's broken down by uses. So we have under three thousand GFA for retail and then eight hundred and fifty for office. So the board has any questions?
Over, this is a question generalized, but I remember seeing a number that was over four thousand square feet, which probably includes other areas?
Other areas. So there's also elevator, there's stairs, there's storage, there's, you know, below grade as far as the GFA. And we actually submitted a supplemental sheet. It's part of the exhibit to our revised EAF form. It breaks down the GFA very clearly of what is proposed into retail and then office. So GFA is not above four thousand.
Okay. Okay.
Pre-submission, but I'm not sure how in detail you want us to go.
Oh, I'd love to hear as much as you can give us. Yeah. Absolutely, absolutely. Yes, thank you.
So this aerial site plan here.
I'm sorry, may I ask who's speaking, please?
Sorry, this is Michael Lamont from Stella Lamont and Hani Architects, Bridge Academy, The Architects.
Thank you, Barbara.
So. Can you guys see this okay? So this is our site plan superimposed, proposed over the aerial photograph. These are the two parking spaces back here that we're just discussing, that they would be accessible from the right of way that goes behind the adjacent building. So what we're proposing, this is the existing store on Main Street, that side, what we are proposing. Tour. What we're proposing basically at the main level. You see the main level here. Here. So the existing main level goes out to Main Street here. As you see the door, this is existing retail space. There's some stairs going up to a second floor above the existing building. What we're proposing here, and this is the eight forty-eight GFA that we're talking about, is extending, expanding the retail on the backside of the building. This service core, which is basically a set of accessible stairs and an elevator that the building inspector asked us to make the building as accessible as we possibly could. Whether we're required to by law, we thought it was a good idea and to try to, you know, sort of comply with that. So we basically have an elevator going from the basement, which would be at the back of the, back of the building. Basically facing the back, having the same set of stairs that goes all the way up three stores, enclosed for fire code. And then the elevator that goes from the basement up to the retail level and all the way up to the office level. In that, in that eight, outside that eight forty-eight, basically the retail, your new retail space and then the office space being the same size. And then having the same score on two floors. So just a sort of big picture of the architecture of both. So can you share the elevation of the rear of the building with the rendering that shows the adjacent buildings?
Beau is online. I'm taking. Yeah, right.
Hi, everyone. Let me share.
Yes, your question. Are you within any floodplains back there or? We are within the floodplain. That's it. That's an AD zone. So we reviewed that with the building inspector. He said basically, it's actually impossible to comply. I mean, the FEMA is written so that it's such a juris, that the, at the base of the building inspector is the local authority. So we talked about complying, because everything down there is below a flood zone. So complying with basically no mechanical below that BFE zone, which is the FEMA requirement, and also having this allowable floodwaters to sort of enter and receive to comply with.
Is it eighty-six, at least?
Eighty-six.
So this, this space down below here.
It's not habitable space. It's basement and it would be storage, so there would be, mechanical would be hung from the ceiling above BFE plus two.
Right.
So is that the lower right, is that the proposed?
So the proposed, I can sort of do this.
Backside.
That's the back.
So this is the back, so. Yeah, so, so basically looking at the adjacent buildings, the Apple Bank Building to the south over here, and this is the.
Restaurant.
Yeah, to the other side. And then we actually expanded, if I can get this on the screen, it's that, it's being so small. But what we did was we superimposed the model of our, of our proposed structure that's the back of the building. Overall, the adjacent structures to kind of show the context back there.
Okay.
The idea, just architecturally, the idea is to have, not just have a clad storage building on the back of Main Street. The idea was to basically have a second, second front door to the overall retail space to, to, to create, you know, I think a pretty inviting space. Basically have, you would come in, this overhang, you come up the stairs, there's these two, two small sort of terraces on the side that are, one provides some scale and two provide. In case of a fire, there's a refuge spot. And so, so the. Hey Beau, were you able to take, be host?
Yeah, he's got it up.
I'll get the screen behind you there. Yep. Shift it. Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. She'll move over so we can see it better. Oh, lovely. Thank you.
Cool, all right.
Excellent. That is, that's good.
Okay, so, you know, the idea with the building is to have just sort of a tailored.
Just so the board knows, Mr. Brown is on Zoom.
Who's on? Oh, he is. Nat, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So conceptually, it's just to have sort of a very light tailored building that still speaks to the nature of Main Street and commercial, the activity in the old buildings around the backside. But to be forward-looking, simple, we have the vertical element that is clad, that's cladding, two-thirds of the stair towers clad in sort of this, this light louvered wood, just to give it a lightness to it. You can see we pulled the, the two terraces off, one to give some sun shading from the west, south, west side, two to give the building a little bit of scale, and three, like I mentioned previously, to have a recreation place of a fire.
So you mentioned entrance, is this, will this be a public entrance as well?
Yes.
Okay.
So you'd be able to enter the.
The store.
Yeah.
The retail store.
Makes sense.
Stairs.
Yeah. We enter from the parking lots in the back of the.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, so conceptually from the basement, the lower level, there's, there's an overhang. And you come through this space and into this stair tower, and that would get you either take the elevator, so basically making all both floors above accessible. And then going up to the retail and then going all the way up to the office space.
Okay, okay.
And providing some, there's a bathroom in that stair port, too, accessible bathroom.
The office space. Is intent that it be used by the owner operated business? No, the intent is that that would be rented? Okay. Questions that I have. The other question is, I mean, I did look through this response from today briefly. In, because it is narrow and it's, it's adjoins those other buildings. You know, how do you guys, is there a plan for, like, how to approach the construction project?
There's a letter submitted from the engineer and Natasha's new exhibit A from EDM, towards the back of this packet, but essentially. They're gonna have to look into, number one, deep watering and also constructing it in a way that is so close to these other properties. And they explained that they're gonna have to go in and see what they find as far as the back structure part, but that they will do so not affecting the neighboring buildings. But they don't have an exact answer until they get in and get to the footing and see what they're testing.
Similar buildings on Main Street were constructed with helical piles, which are sort of a low-impact piling system instead of, you know, pile driven with a pneumatic hammer. So the helical piles are minimal disturbance. Like I said, just some recent buildings on Main Street were constructed that way, the party wall, the helical piles, that's going to be great. And there is some deep watering that happens back there.
Right.
Um, is there gonna be a need for, like, scaffolding or something, anything that affects the neighboring buildings when they're doing this?
You know, I don't, I don't really, I think the concept is to build it on these party wall situations that you're really building from your side out. So that we're building, that there's, I believe that there's any roof scaffoldy adjacent properties that hasn't, that's something that's come up in our protocol yet, if we're developing. Certainly that gives to try to see as low impact as possible.
Well, no, we'll, we'll get to you, sir, after what he's done.
Oh, this is.
Okay, fine, fine. Okay. If you're gonna speak, hit the cop and introduce yourself and give us your name and so forth.
David Cronin. Sorry, I have a car license.
Fair enough, fair enough.
David, sorry.
This is the construction, but similar to how that compass building went up next to the movie theater.
Okay.
It just went straight up.
Okay.
There's nothing on either side.
Yep.
Okay, that's helpful. Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. Yeah.
Good, great. Thank you for that. You spoke about other buildings, and this is not the first building to build out on the backside. Have you done any comparisons to other buildings in terms of square footage that you're adding on, for example? I know you, you mentioned square footage is going toward retail and you're keeping it at six, three thousand. But the, I have to look back at the specifics, but I'm gonna be looking, one of the things we'll all be looking at is, what's the square footage now? And what do you, how much are you expanding it? And in my head, there's, there's a number which is fifty percent, which is allowable without, without, but I could be wrong about that. So if you want to speak to that a little bit, that'd be appreciated.
Sure, so the existing retail GFA is two thousand and eight-two. We are proposing an addition of eight hundred and forty-eight. So the total GFA for the retails would be two thousand nine hundred and thirty. The addition for the office, there's a office existing, so it's going from zero to eight hundred and forty-eight. We don't have counts from other neighboring properties, but we can, we can ask.
But is that Kathy, I don't know, Kathy, is that consistent, that number with fifty?
So they're asking for a variance for that, because there's a fifty percent limitation on the expansion or creation of a conforming structure.
Right.
The structure itself.
Yeah.
Not the use.
Regardless of the use.
Yeah.
Right, so they're asking for beyond fifty percent.
Got it.
It's ninety percent, correct? Now, we actually read random numbers, so it's actually only eighty-one percent. That's eighty percent.
Okay, but that, and that variance is pending.
Right.
While we're doing the EAF.
Yes, you have to do secret before the CBA can act on any of these variances. So it really hasn't even been presented, presented very briefly to the CBA and then transferred to the sport.
And then there's a parking variance as well.
Correct.
And how many, how many spaces is that?
So we are required to have eleven, and we are proposing to keep the two that we have.
Right. So you'd need a variance for nine.
Right, and that will also come to the sport for that referral.
Right, yes.
Referral that comes to the board, so we have to give a memo on that as well.
Okay.
Before ZDA can act, remind me, thank you.
Just for clarity, how many, how many variances are you applying for?
Eight total.
And ones for height, perhaps?
Uh, yes, sir, I can, I can have it in front of me.
Yeah, oh, can you pull up the cross-section that shows the height of the proposed building, the adjacent buildings?
Is that just because of the bulkhead?
Correct. We, we only see the height because of the bulkhead. So max height is thirty-five feet and we're proposing around thirty-nine, but it's just the bulkhead that's going to pierce that, that height.
And forgive my lack of, by bulkhead, what is that?
That elevator access to the roof.
It's, it's the stair and elevator tower. So roof access, I put in this bulkhead.
And you need roof access to be able to repair things or, like, it's access to the roof?
There's a roof deck, actually, that you're proposing. Am I right about that?
Okay, okay.
And I assume, I assume the roof deck would be combined with the, or an access from the office, or is it something different?
Roof deck would be access from the stair bulkhead, stair bulkhead.
General of the building.
Part of, part of, sort of a relative, semi-public core that's a very important, because from the basement.
Okay.
And what's the anticipated use for that roof?
Excuse me, whoever's renting the office, if they want to go up and have lunch, if they're going to the store, if they want to go up and have lunch.
Okay.
So, so it's not intended as retail space?
I don't believe so. No.
Okay. Help me, I, I was looking on this, this, I think, and I'm having a hard time reading the different heights. What's that red number say? The, the red line that has a number to the left of it? Isn't, isn't it forty-something feet?
That's the max building height. But that's taken, so there's different elevations. So do you want to walk through the different numbers on that elevation?
So. I'm sorry. Yeah, this number, the forty-two eleven is above groundwater, so zero. So the thirty-five feet that we're counting is average adjacent grade, which gets us at the forty-two eleven.
That's what I wanted to know. That's confused by that. Thank you. Okay. Okay. And if I read the plans correctly, when you're inside, just so we understand, you, the, the floor on the, the ground floor on the front of the building, say this, you know, Main Street, is a different level from ground floor in the back.
That's right.
So if we're looking at heights and things, it would be clear that we're looking at front building, back building, or.
That's right.
You know.
Two stories from the front on Main Street, three stories from the back, as we're basically ten feet or so below Main Street on the backside of, of Main Street.
Right.
And then. Yeah, actually, and then, when you're connecting the retail space by basically, there's a landing, there's this existing set upstairs, you've been in the building, you basically go up the set of stairs, then you go up to the showroom that's upstairs.
Yeah.
But however, we've located the, the main floor of the retail, that you go up the landing, and you can either go continue up to the retail that's on the second floor of the existing retail, or you continue through, straight through to the new space. And then that new space will be continued retail and then the elevator surface floor on the north side as you go down.
Okay, so the contiguous retail spaces of the ground floor of the front building, the ground floor, the, the floor one, I guess, of the back building? And then floor two of the, of the existing building?
Right.
So those are, those are the parts that would feed, that would be contiguous to each other?
Yes.
Got it.
Well, the office is, right, so the office.
Correct. Which is the third, which is the second.
Three of the spaces are between each other.
Yeah, yeah.
Main space, new retail space, space above your system.
And you mentioned, you mentioned just now, um, three levels from the backside. I'm assuming you're referring to the basement level, which you, you said was a storage, essentially.
Storage and it's below FEMA, because it's all low down.
Right.
So, but there's, there's space above, below the floor, so it's, that we can have mechanical on, at BFE plus two basement, so it will be mechanical and some storage down there.
Got it. So it's, it's essentially, it's a store, it's a floor that's, it's a floor, but it's not useful in terms of retail.
That's right. Yeah, it's similar to the existing basement of the main, the Main Street side, because there's two floors above that, the basement below as well.
Okay.
Did you want to talk a little bit about the, just the about nature of the business?
Yeah, yes, yes. And so, as it is coming in front of these boards, it seems to expand these store to compete against, well, you know, big box store, online stores. It's a local family-owned business, it's open year-round. There's, you know, not many stores out here like that anymore, and it's good for the overall, maybe it's good for the village. And we're seeking to keep this business here for another twenty years, hopefully. And so expanding this use is what's going to allow them to do this, and it's the intent, the village to keep these types of businesses on the streets.
Okay.
I just have another, are you gonna have any mechanical on the roof?
No mechanical.
Nothing.
Actually.
There's no condenser?
I think, I think, Beau, we have to be condensed something, Rex is. We have, or on the roof, but.
Condensers are gonna be aware in the back on the new structure or the existing structure?
Between these buildings.
Right, sort of behind the, the proposed, we don't, I don't have a removed plant there, but it would basically be those stays between the, the new building and the old building, so if you have the backside.
The same, the other space, yeah?
Yeah, so it would be, you know, back far enough from Main Street, basically.
See it, right?
You won't see it from Main Street, and it'll be back far enough from the backside, if you want to see it here. So basically, in the middle.
Right.
There would be a few condensers up there.
It looks like you have some screening already planned.
That's the idea. There's even nobody, I mean, yeah, it's only people that see it actually on the roof. Anyway, and the adjacent building is actually full of mechanical equipment up there already.
And would that be moved to the new location or?
The restaurant next door is.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. No, I'm just asking, because this is usually a topic that comes up at some point. When these things are going on the roof, sometimes there's comments. From community members or the village about being able to see this when they didn't think they were gonna see it.
Sure.
It comes up as a shared issue. So just want to make sure that.
Yeah, I think that's anyway, because on the other side of Main Street, did you, Beau, did you do a section looking up at, we talked about the view from, looking up toward the roof from, and what you would see in terms of, kind of a view, cone?
Yeah, I, I did one, but I don't, and it was submitted, but I don't have it on my machine right now.
Okay. Do you want to just pull up the section you have at the bottom, at the bottom of your drawing set there? Yeah, so, so basically, just see where we're, we're locating it there, back, at the back and side of the existing, I think. And in terms of, you have a photograph looking from across the street, looking at the existing building from Main Street?
Yep.
So from, from Main Street, there's, there's no.
Your sight lines.
There's no way to see that from actually the side and from the backside of the, that's maybe, that's just out of sight.
Okay. Any other questions from here that we're thinking of, anything on your mind? Kathy, have any thoughts about anything popping up in your head?
My head was ADA accessibility and for the human instances.
Yeah, so we're, yeah, so we're accessing the backside.
As far as FEMA and floodplain, I mean, the, the back wall is going to be, what is gonna be? Is it gonna flood through that wall, or what are you gonna do? Oh, it's gonna be concrete block or concrete wall.
Concrete block, and it's, they would never have built this structure, it's just a, a local administrator, through the code. So he said, as long as we comply, the only thing we need to do is comply, you know, with the, basically the square inches, I mean, so many square inches of opening per square foot of floor area, so as long as we comply with the, these floodbeds that, you know, basically, sort of hydrostatic. Equalizer. But, you know, it's different than on, what we're doing at structures, say, on, on an ocean or waterfront, that you allow water all the way through.
Right.
There's no way to do this, because we're one floor below. At least we can allow the water to come in on two exposed sides, because we have the exposed side, you know, basically on the, on the west side and then on the south side. So building inspector says if you comply, that is on, that's what we can't do. Basically, I'm not sure, I don't, I haven't really looked around, I'm not really quite sure how any other buildings meet FEMA back there. If they do.
I mean, yeah, that's the only one you could look at as far as the cinema.
Yeah.
New construction.
Yeah, I don't recall seeing any flood, floodbeds.
You're not, you're not in an X zone, so you're.
Yeah.
Probably okay with this, I know. Sounds like you're thinking about it, so.
Yeah, so we met with, with, like I said, with Chris Alvin.
And I saw, just, we spoke briefly about parking earlier at the front table here, just before this meeting began. I see you, you turned around the, the parking spaces.
Yes, to make them accessible and functional, because the lot is so narrow, it just really doesn't work. Pulling the cars in facing the building, so like, you have the right of way there.
Right. Right, and, and we had discussed briefly just before the meeting, that, that odd little deck at grade that one drives over, I suppose.
Yeah.
You know, that's something to be explored.
Yes, and that's the last photo of the supplemental materials that I submitted, because what I saw at almost thirty is putting in there's a deck at grade and then a right of way. And it is just planks playing down.
On the ground.
Yeah.
Just talk about that wood deck that's in the right of way, and that's.
Right. Yeah. Right. So it's just, it's just, to your knowledge, just wood, wood planks at ground level, nothing underneath it? Okay, alright. Do you share that right of way with the restaurant?
They lost all their parking and everything.
Yeah. Yes.
That's on their property line.
Okay.
They tend to think that they're right of way, it's very contentious.
I see, yeah. And then on the other side of that property line, it's not on this, this thing, but I know you, in the photos, I can see if this car is parked at a diagonal, are those? That's village parking? I never knew that.
Yeah.
Huh.
It is interesting because the village, I wanted to configure it differently, actually helps parking.
Right, okay, okay. And then right behind, I'm looking at the, the, right behind your parking area. Apple, apple goes up and around a little bit. And there's a, there's a masonry wall there that surrounds it. And that's apples?
Yes.
Okay, so your property goes up to that, that masonry wall? Got it, okay.
Well, no, it doesn't go to, sorry, it doesn't go to the masonry wall, because, if we, there we go, you zoom in.
Goes close to it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Got it, okay. Yeah, yeah, that's just how it goes. Okay. Alright, um, so we haven't had, I, I have, certainly haven't had a chance to look at the revised E A F, but thank you for submitting it. I don't think you have yet either, Kathy. So, well, you'll have, walk me through a little bit what you're thinking about the process will be. You started to talk about what, going forward from here in terms of reviewing the E A F that they just resubmitted. And I guess we should get back to them with, with, let them know whether it's completely E A F or no.
Yes, I would, I would think by the next planning board meeting, we would have that input, if not sooner. On the responsiveness of the E A F. In addition, as part of this pre submission public hearing, if there's comments from the public, they have ten days to submit them. And if this board should provide comments and use everything that you've been asking, are the items that we would include in a memo of things that, you know, should be kind of cleared up before the site plan application is finalized. So we are not doing a formal site plan review until we really get to the zoning board. Once the zoning board, assuming they approve this, it comes back to this board. And then we do a full completeness review, make sure that, you know, we have all the details that are required for site plan approval.
And that would be a public hearing at that stage as well. Right.
This, this board has to issue a pre submission report on this hearing and give feedback, initial feedback on what you think about the application within thirty days of today. Of this hearing.
Okay, okay.
And then, and then I, I imagine at some point we'll have, we'll have to do C C R as well, it'll be presented through the board in regards to C C R, right, C C R conundrums, right? If, if, if everything has been responded to and the C C R, the E A F part one is complete, we can do a part two for the next meeting. But I would say that we can definitely do that until I know what's in.
Of course.
The response, so.
Right, right. Um, okay. Is there anyone online now, because speaking of public commentary, is there anyone else that wishes to comment on this now? Okay, okay. Well, if there aren't any more questions at the moment, I guess we could close the public hearing.
Yeah.
If that's, if that's.
Alright, so moved.
Alright, there we go, all those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye, alright, public hearing closed. Very good, so.
Thanks.
So we will be getting back to you, I, I assume if I understand you both correctly, within the next thirty days with, with our report.
We'll prepare a report for you and you'll adopt it as pre submission report at your next meeting. And that will be issued too, yeah.
Okay, and that will give them direct, a little, little.
It'll just, it'll be live on all, any issues today and all the issues talking on the table until the next, and Liz, yes, it'll be on.
And Liz, I assume going forward, other issues might bubble up that we're not aware of, correct? Um, so this is not, what we want to be as comprehensive as possible.
No, of course, and it's, it's, you're, it's always subject to change and information.
Very good.
Always.
Very good. Okay.
You have motion to table it till the next meeting, which is July twenty fifth.
July twenty fifth is the next meeting, I'd need a motion to table it.
So moved.
Moved by, okay. Thank you, Ron, all those in favor of table it to the next meeting?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, thank you both for coming in and thank you for, for presenting the way you did, it's helpful. Is there anything else that anyone wants to talk about? We're good, then I think we can adjourn the meeting, I was like, I just made a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Larry, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and we are adjourned, it is five forty-one.
I just like.